Did you please take your seats? Members of council, I will call this committee a whole meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, if you could do a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Okay, thank you. Members of council, we have... Okay, it's been noted. Thank you. Declarations of interest, members of council? Mr. Clerk, none online, none in the room. We'll move on. There are no statutory public meetings. We do have one presentation. Item 4.1, Stella Danus Papakas Dino, Commissioner of Social Services, and Alan Robbins, Director of Housing Services, at home in Durham, the Durham Housing Plan 2014 to 2024 Annual Report. Commissioner, you're on the line. Oh, sorry. Mr. Clerk, directions for the Commissioner, please.
Stella, there might be a microphone icon on the right side that should be gray.
Yes.
There we go. Now we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Great. Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Henry, and members of the Committee of the Whole. I am Stella Danus Papakas Dino, and together with Director Alan Robbins, we will provide you with an annual update on At Home in Durham. Next slide, please. I can't see the slides, so I'm hoping they're switching. At Home in Durham is the region's 10-year housing plan, and it sets out the region's long-term vision for housing as is an extension of the Durham Region Strategic Plan and the Regional Official Plan. It is supported by the work of the Master Housing Strategy and the recommendations of the Affordable and Seniors Housing Task Force. In 2019, At Home in Durham was refreshed as part of its five-year review, and new targets were set to support the realization of the plan's goal by 2024. The report before committee today is the ninth annual report for this plan. At Home in Durham will conclude in 2024, and staff will report back to regional council with the new draft plan in the fall of 2024. The new housing plan must include: public consultation, an assessment of current and future housing needs, objectives and targets related to housing needs, a description of the measures proposed to meet the objectives and targets, excuse me, and a description of how progress towards meeting the objectives and targets will be measured. In the five-year review of At Home in Durham, the region committed to reduce chronic homelessness to zero, increase the supply of affordable housing rental units by 1,000 units, increase the supply of medium-to-high-density housing, and make significant progress in the regeneration of community housing. Progress is being made towards these commitments, however, it will take time and continued investments from all levels of government to reach our final goals. And now I will pass it on to Director Alan Robbins.
Thank you very much, Stella. Over the first five years of the plan, 241 new affordable housing units were created. Since the beginning of 2020, an additional 227 units were created, and another 256 units are currently under varying stages of development. In just over two years, we have doubled the number of units compared to the first five years of the plan with respect to units completed and in progress. This is... There's a potential for the initiation of over 1,000 additional affordable housing units over the remaining term of the plan. Given the time it takes to initiate development, I am very pleased with our progress and proud of the regional team dedicated to increasing the affordable housing options for our residents. There are currently eight projects under development which are anticipated to be completed between 2023 and 2026. These include the Beaverton Supportive Housing Project, 47 units of affordable, supportive, and transitional housing; three Durham Region Nonprofit Housing Corporation projects under development as part of their long-term sustainability strategy. We also have a cooperative housing project in Whitby which will provide 18 affordable and supportive housing units for seniors, people with developmental disabilities, and people with mental health and addiction issues. We have a nonprofit project that will provide 27 affordable and supportive housing units for youth on a former school property in Oshawa. Under the At Home Incentive Program, we have a 75-unit apartment building for seniors and persons with disabilities in Oshawa, and there's a 41-unit purpose-built rental townhouse project in Pickering which will include 13 affordable housing units. These new developments are critical in meeting Durham's commitment to initiate 1,000 new affordable housing units by 2024 and realize affordable rent for everyone under Goal Two of At Home in Durham. At the Committee of the Whole meeting on June 22, 2022, the committee requested a geographic breakdown of location of affordable housing units across Durham. This chart outlines where affordable housing units have been completed or in progress since the implementation of At Home in Durham. As you can see, it has been a challenge to create affordable housing units in the western end of Durham along the 401 corridor, namely Pickering and Ajax. It's believed that the scarcity and high cost of land makes affordable development challenging. The region of Durham developed a new At Home Incentive Program in 2022 to provide upfront capital funding for purpose-built, affordable rental housing through annual calls for applications. The inaugural call for applications in the fall of 2022 exceeded expectations and resulted in a total of 7.45 million in regional funding being provided to create 88 affordable housing units. Both private and nonprofit developers are eligible to apply for AHEP, that's the At Home Incentive Program. Eligible projects must have a minimum of five units and include: new construction, conversion of non-residential buildings to purpose-built rental, addition of new affordable units to existing sites, and community housing redevelopment that increases the supply of affordable housing units. At least 5% of the project must be affordable at no more than average market rent for a minimum of 25 years. Preference is given to projects that offer higher proportion of affordable units and a longer affordability period. A robust and affordable housing sector is critical to eliminating homelessness and building healthy, strong, and vibrant communities, and the new AHEP is a critical investment in achieving this goal. In addition to its commitment to increase the affordable housing supply in the region, Goal Two of At Home in Durham commits to increase rental assistance for low-income households. New affordable housing development can take years to complete. In the meantime, renters struggle, and it's important for the region to have tools to address affordability while new affordable housing is being developed. With a median rental income of $45,700 and average rental payments of $1,722, it would take more than $23,000 more in income for these renters to be at an affordable level, that is, 30% of income. As landlords can increase rents on turnover, rents for vacant units are generally even higher, making the search for affordable rental housing units more difficult. Financial housing assistance programs help to bridge the gap between income and rental costs and are critical to address the immediate needs of low- and moderate-income households in Durham as new affordable housing developments are under construction. The region offers direct financial housing assistance through the Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit. This is a federal-provincial-funded benefit that is administered by the Ministry of Finance and can be used anywhere in Ontario. Durham has allocated a portion of funding annually and facilitates the application process through the DASH, that's the Durham Access to Social Housing Waitlist. Our 2023 allocation was roughly $1.4 million, and it's expected that that will be able to provide benefits to roughly 175 households. We also have the Durham Portable Housing Benefit, the Durham PHB. This is a municipally-funded benefit that can be used anywhere in Durham as opposed to the COB, which is anywhere in Ontario. Although the Durham Portable Housing Benefit represents only about 9.6% of current benefits, it is exclusive to Durham. It is not time-limited, which the COB is time-limited, and is more supportive than COB as some recipients can struggle with annual reporting requirements. The Durham PHB has been incredibly successful for recipients since it was first piloted in 2019. Community housing provides almost 30% of the rental housing supply in Durham and most of the affordable rental supply. It is an integral part of a strong, healthy, and affordable housing sector. In July 2020, the Housing Services Act, the HSA, was amended to provide a new framework for community housing to incent providers to stay in the housing system when their mortgages end and enables long-term sustainability of community housing. In July 2022, new regulations were released to operationalize the framework, including the following. Service managers, like the region of Durham, may enter into new service agreements under Part 7.1 of the Housing Services Act with housing providers that reach the end of their mortgage and other providers that are not currently covered under the HSA. Service managers may start to include municipally-funded housing assistance programs that comply with specific criteria under their legislative service-level standards. And housing providers may also request to enter into exit agreements subject to plans for continued operation, redevelopment, or reinvestment in affordable housing. Mutual agreement is required from both the housing provider and service manager to enter into an exit agreement, and it's anticipated that this will be very rare. New Part 7.1 service agreements will enable the region to strategically reinvest any mortgage subsidy savings at end-of-mortgage to ensure that these publicly-funded assets continue to provide affordable, high-quality housing to people in Durham. We're currently working with a number of housing providers to negotiate Part 7.1 agreements and have been approached by other former federal providers for new partnerships. Just to address a previous comment, there is no low-end-of-market housing sector. There's a nonprofit housing sector that generally provides the majority of affordable rental housing. We are supporting this sector through our Part 7.1 agreements, and we are also supporting affordable development through the AHEP program, which guarantees affordable housing units. Strategic reinvestment of end-of-mortgage subsidy savings also offers an opportunity to better address the capital needs of our community housing providers. Building condition assessments conducted in 2016 revealed that community housing providers will require more than $15 million annually to address all capital deficiencies identified across the collective portfolio. In contrast, annual capital reserve contributions amount to just under $5 million annually. Although funding under the Canada-Ontario Community Housing Initiative, referred to as COCHI, has been increasing and is expected to continue to increase relative to the reduction in federal block funding, it is still not sufficient to address outstanding capital repairs. End-of-mortgage affords an opportunity to address this deficiency by strategically investing in the capital needs of community housing providers through the reinvestment of any mortgage savings. Envision Durham is the region's municipal comprehensive review of the Regional Official Plan, ROP. The new ROP was adopted on May 17, 2023, and forwarded to the province for approval. It establishes a brand-new ROP for Durham, developed through detailed study and extensive public and stakeholder engagement. It includes important changes to land use planning policies, including draft policies for housing and affordable housing. The new ROP includes enabling policies that will create a more supportive and permissive environment for affordable rental housing and diverse housing options in the region in line with the goals of At Home in Durham. At Home in Durham commits to ending homelessness in the region by supporting initiatives to help people to obtain and retain housing, as well as partnerships to address support needs of people with mental health and addictions who are experiencing or have experienced homelessness. The region currently has a by-name list, which is a real-time list of people known to be experiencing homelessness, as well as a coordinated access system that enables community partners to prioritize and work more efficiently with vulnerable populations. Although the benefits of the by-name list and coordinated access system continue to be impacted by the increasing need for health and homelessness supports and a challenging rental housing market, the homelessness sector in Durham was successful in assisting 218 homeless individuals and families to find housing in 2022, including 131 people who had previously been chronically homeless. New sustained investments at both the federal and regional level have significantly increased the region's ability to strategically plan, strengthen, and increase its response to homelessness. In 2023, the total amount of federal, provincial, and regional funding committed to support homelessness programs and services in Durham increased to just over $25.6 million. Regional investment in homelessness system planning and coordination increased from $27,000 in 2021 to $6.3 million in 2023, now representing almost 25% of the total funding allocated. Of the total $25.6 million funding, $12.1, almost half, is planned to be allocated to housing programs and homelessness prevention in line with the goals and actions of At Home in Durham. Increased and sustained investment provide an opportunity to implement an improved homelessness response plan to achieve better outcomes for people experiencing homelessness in Durham. I'll now pass it back over to Stella.
Thank you, Alan. The At Home in Durham plan will conclude in 2024, and as noted earlier, the plan must include: public consultations, an assessment of current and future housing needs in Durham, objectives and targets related to housing need, a description of the measures proposed to meet the objectives and targets, and a description of how progress towards meeting the objectives and targets will be measured. The Housing Services Division will be engaging a consultant to assist in the development of this new plan. Public consultations will build on the Envision Durham consultations and the Housing Policy Planning Discussion Paper. And the consultant will also coordinate targeted consultations with community partners and stakeholders. The goals and actions of At Home in Durham will improve affordability and access to housing with and without supports, protect the existing affordable housing supply, encourage housing diversity, and build capacity in the housing system. Thank you. Alan and I are available to take any questions.
Thank you. First, in the request to speak is Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wonder if we could put this slide back up where it says "goals"? Is that possible?
Is it possible to have that slide put up, please?
Was that the beginning of the presentation?
Slide four, maybe. Roger, please.
No, before that. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. These were established as our commitments for the end of 2024. The first one, have we reduced chronic homelessness to zero?
Well, Counselor Nicholson, the answer to that question is no, and we have gone through one of the most challenging times in the history of the country, but I'll let staff answer.
Would be nice if the staff could answer. Thank you.
No, we're not. We're going to have a good meeting today, so...
Well, you interrupted me. I didn't interrupt you.
I gave you an answer to your question.
I didn't ask you.
Counselor Nicholson, we're not going back and forth.
Thank you.
Please.
Through the chair, no, we have not reduced chronic homelessness to zero.
Have we increased the supply of affordable rental housing by 1,000 units?
No, we haven't, but we haven't reached the end of our plan either.
Okay. Even your own numbers say many of your projects that you identify as in the mill aren't going to be done to 2026. Is that correct? So they're not going to meet the 2024 deadline?
We may or we may not. I won't know until the end of 2024.
Okay. How many projects in the mill right now are going to be completed by the end of 2024?
The commitment by council was the initiation of 1,000 units, not the completion of 1,000 units.
The commitment says increase the supply. It doesn't say commit to increasing the supply. There's increase in the supply.
Through the chair, I think if you refer back to the 2019 report, it would state that it's to initiate the development of 1,000 units.
I guess the point I want to suggest, and, you know, one of the commitments that were made is we were going to look towards inclusionary zoning. Four years is almost by, and we still haven't made any appreciable steps towards that. When are we going to see inclusionary zoning brought forward as a commitment by this region?
Through the chair, I can refer to our planning department, but inclusionary zoning, I believe, is restricted to transit-oriented developments, so it's not a broad initiative that will create thousands of units across the region. But I can defer.
Mr. Bridgman?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. With respect to inclusionary zoning, the region has, through Amendment 186, being the major transit stationery amendment, which is now embedded in Envision Durham, enabled area municipalities to pass the necessary bylaws for inclusionary zoning. There's a regional CIP, for example. So the region has done all the things to enable area municipalities to proceed to the next step with actual inclusionary zoning bylaws.
At transit locations only?
That's the...
So the 95% of the region that's not in the sector that's transit or MTSA, they're simply ignored? Is that where we stand now?
Yeah, I think that would be accurate. Yeah.
The reason I'm asking these questions, and I'd just like you to comment if you could, is we have lofty goals, but we have minimal successes. Most of the projects that are listed in this report have been projects initiated at your partners, not at the region. So my question is, if the region were to exist, how many of these projects would have gone ahead anyway?
Yeah, you know what? I'm going to have our CA respond.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I have to start by thanking staff because we have made material progress in all of these areas in the last five years, starting practically from ground zero. With respect to social housing, there's another number of items on the agenda today that talk to how we're moving that forward. We are definitely increasing the supply of affordable rental housing. We cannot do it on our own, and when the not-for-profit sector does expand its inventory, it's because the region has worked with its federal and provincial partners to access the resources necessary to enable those units to be housed, to be affordable. We cannot own and operate them all ourselves. We must work with the not-for-profit sector, but as service system manager, we do our part to make sure they get the resources and that they're providing quality homes for those in need. Thank you.
I guess to follow up on that, would it be fair to say that the growth in need is outstripping the growth in supply?
Through the chair, across the country.
Even in Durham, I'm specifically dealing with.
Across the country and in Durham.
Mr. Chairman, I try to be respectful, and I try not to interrupt other members of council who are just asking questions.
Counselor Nicholson, just so you know, I'm starting to find that the tone of your questions to staff...
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, in our roles of procedure, there's nothing regarding tone. I'm respectful. I'm asking important questions.
Counselor Nicholson, as the chair, sitting in this chair, I control the meeting, and I'm saying that your tone, I'm finding to be challenging, and I'm going to ask you to keep the decorum of the meeting that we had today and ask questions.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect...
Counselor Nicholson, we're not going to go back and forth.
This is a tactic you use to shut people up, and I'm not willing to accept that.
Counselor Nicholson...
I've asked respectful questions and factual questions only.
No, you're asking pointed questions, and I'm feeling uncomfortable, so I'm sure that staff are. So you have the floor. You can continue. I'm just asking you to be respectful in your questions.
Mr. Chairman, I take great offense to your assertion that anything I've said here has not been respectful or has not been within the decorum of this chamber.
Counselor, that's your choice. I've given you my opinion.
Well, that's fine, and, you know, we're entitled to disagree.
Well, you know, Counselor, we do agree sometimes. I'll say that. But on this case, I'm asking that the tone and the respect for staff be shown.
I have great respect for staff, Mr. Chairman. Where I object is when you don't want me to ask pointed questions in order to represent the constituents who elected me.
And Counselor...
And it's not up to you to approve my questions. It's not up to you to accept my questions as long as I meet the decorum rules of our council.
Counselor, I'm just asking you to be respectful of staff.
Asking for what's always occurred. Just as a follow-up, have you considered, working with the private sector rather than providing financial subsidy, entering into agreements where the region would rent portions of private sector housing that's being built and sublet to our tenants list or projected tenants list in order to encourage the supply and reduce the capital cost to the region?
Through the chair, so we have a number of agreements with private landlords where we bridge the gap between what tenants can pay and what the market rents are. Of course, when we're entering into those agreements, we look at what the market rents are and whether they're reasonable. I don't think it's financially responsible for me to be bridging the gap between 30% of income and $3,000 or $4,000 a month. So we do look at that when we're partnering with landlords. It's becoming increasingly challenging to find private sector landlords who want to partner with us because there is really no financial benefit. There's no benefit to them at all to enter into such agreements when the rental market is so tight. We do have some private rental landlords who are socially conscious that we partner with regularly, and we are able to support them through rent supplements and through the At Home Incentive Program. So that At Home Incentive Program provides that upfront capital to ensure that those affordable units are available for at least 25 years. If you know of any private landlords you want to partner with me, please send them to me. Give them my contact information.
I appreciate that, and I think the problem is not that they don't want to participate, it's that our model doesn't work. And then we need to trade off density. We need to trade off additional floors of units. We need to be the landlord or renter of record for these private sector units and sublet. There are many developers out there that I've spoken to that have indicated that if the region were to be the tenant of record and make the payments regularly, and then the region took on the role of administrating and subletting the units, they'd be ready to sign up tomorrow.
If you could send me that information...
I will definitely send you that information because there's a lineup ready to go.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will raise the rest of my questions during the debate on the item when it comes forward.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Mayor Pietri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I know that we're making progress, and it's not a difficult or easy proposition. It is just a reality. Things take time, and I think we were behind the eight ball, regardless of whether, you know, the existing pressures were exacerbated by the pandemic or not. We've been behind for a while, and I think we're catching up. But to sort of get ahead of the curve, one of the considerations through you, Mr. Chair, was that we're having difficulty finding land. And I know I've brought this concept up before, and it's probably not a novel one. I know that likely staff internally... that likely staff internally have discussed this before, but I'm, I'm gonna be very public about it, um, because I think it's time that we wrap our heads around, taking a look at some of our own sites, particularly the depots, um, they're older, they're in need of some of repair, and they have a great deal of, of acreage that can be offered to projects of this nature, especially if you're looking at densifying them, and they're located in areas that are increasingly urban. So it, it may be more intelligent for us eventually, I wouldn't say eventually, but soon, to take a look at a proposition where we look for more land in an area that's more suited for depot, um, and essentially activate these lands for these urban causes. And, and I think that this is not just a cause, it's a, it's a need, where I think we're gonna be able to position a project, or projects of this nature, in a way that's much different than trying to shoehorn it in an area where we're not gonna activate as many units as, as we need. So if you're looking at, through you, Mr. Chair, the potential of 1,000 units, I would suggest that some of our depot sites, uh, would be able to activate that in just one building, um, or potentially multiple buildings, and, and have a community feel. So I'm hoping, and the question through you, Mr. Chair, is is staff looking at, uh, not just certain lands, but those specific lands, because you'll be able to kill two birds with one stone, optimize those lands for this purpose, and also activate, uh, other lands for, for the need that I think, um, you know, the works department has, and being able to, to afford workers, um, you know, better working conditions, or more modernized spaces, uh, that they can deliver service to community for.
Through the chair, um, we are looking at all available options. Uh, I should say that, um, when we say we're behind the eight ball, I just wanna make it clear that every jurisdiction in Canada is behind the eight ball, we are no different than anywhere else, um, so just so we don't think that, uh, that we're lacking behind other regions or large cities. Secondly, uh, with respect to the availability of land, we do have a number of sites that are already residential, that we're looking at redevelopment, um, which addresses creating additional units, as well as, uh, dealing with the, um, the capital work that's required at some of these very aging sites. So at this point in time, it's not so much a lack of land, it's the amount of time it takes to go from a concept to actually having people move in. And I know that we have, uh, we talk about expedited development, um, and we know that sometimes expedited development doesn't actually result in anything being expedited, and if we want to ensure that communities are made aware and have, have engagement in the process, these are all things that take, uh, take time.
Yep, and, and I guess that's the second greatest challenge, uh, the third would probably be finding a proponent to work with you, and so there's probably some creative ways to take a look at that, uh, you know, putting out the request for a proponent to partner in on X land, uh, or multiple, uh, pieces of land and seeing that through, but I wanna get to the, the second greatest challenge, which you just identified, which is the, you know, the delivering the product to market and the time it takes. So through you, Mr. Chair, do we have a strategy that we're looking at, and it's not a question that you need to answer today, but it's just a hypothetical or, you know, rhetorical, like, do we really have a plug-and-place strategy that we formalize that is outside of the scope of the usual approvals, because this isn't, uh, a proposition that is one that, you know, we should look at as, you know, the regular sort of approval process, we're in control, like, it's our stuff. So I find it, you know, concerning that we're not able to activate our own stuff quicker, um, considering, you know, I, I understand there's legislations, but we gotta come to a consensus or some sort of an understanding collectively that some of the, you know, due diligence needs to be.
Question, please.
Yeah, we, we need, we need to, so the question is, are we looking at finding ways to optimize our own due diligence processes?
So Oliver, CAO will respond, please.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, we're very careful at not moving too quickly because it's critically important for these projects to be successful to ensure that the community is fully engaged and supportive, and we certainly learned some lessons from our Beaverton development and from the Micro Homes project. That's being, that being said, in March, council approved us entering a partnership with Infrastructure Ontario for the revitalization of our social housing stock to convert it into, uh, mixed income, uh, units and intensify, uh, the areas. That agreement has now been, uh, approved by the minister, uh, and you have a, a report before you today that talks about setting up a small office to make sure that things move expeditiously. The Community Outreach and Engagement Consultant has always, already been retained, and there'll be extensive community engagement, uh, in the coming months. It's really important that we do this because in order to advance this as expeditiously as we would like, it does, uh, require moving, uh, tenants out and back in, and we want to ensure that they feel engaged, secure, and that we're developing the community that they want to see. So we do have a process in place, we, we are very careful though not to, for lack of a better word, steamroll over, uh, the surrounding community, we want them to be quite supportive of what it is we're trying to do.
Respectfully, no one's looking to steamroll. We're looking to provide housing for the community. So I, I take exception, um, to some of the comments made regarding, uh, how quickly we can move, um, this is a different proposition, we're not talking about development for the sake of profit, we're talking about providing housing. If we've got an issue in, in terms of need, through you, Mr. Chair, I would expect on behalf of residents, because I think that they know the difference, that we proceed, because oftentimes our processes are in place, uh, for the sake of being in place and telling people that we're going through it, uh, but it's, it's our own project, so let's not kid anyone here, we're gonna be building affordable housing, and these are the lands that we have available to us, otherwise, I, I don't know what kind of virtual, uh, world we live in in terms of housing, it's not gonna work if we're not just straight with people and telling them, this is what we're doing to get this stuff to market quickly. So it's either, you know, you do it or you don't, and I think we're damned if we do and damned if we don't, we just have to find a way to do it quicker, because I do believe that the pressures are mounting. And I, I wanna applaud, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, staff, uh, whatever level that, you know, they're involved in being able to deliver this stuff, because it's not easy, but we, we would like to move a little quicker, so if there's a way to do that, I'm there, and I, and I expect to see how we can get there.
Go ahead.
Um, through the chair, I just wanted to note that for a number of our projects, um, I, I wanna make an important point that we have been working very closely with the lower-tier municipal planning staff, uh, at expediting, uh, some of the processes. Uh, even with that being said, there are a number of things that are outside of their control, uh, for an example, we had a, we have a project where, uh, a lexicon decided after the fact that they had to move the transformer, uh, which set the project back at least six months and, uh, required design changes. So there are a number of things that are outside of our control in the development process, but the lower-tier municipal planning staff, uh, have really been exceptional in trying to accommodate us, to try and get things through as quickly as possible, as well as regional staff, um, in, uh, in the capacity that they, um, they have in the process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Schumer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, and, and hopefully you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, my, my first question would be, uh, the numbers that are presented here, and I, I think I know the answer here, but I, the numbers that are presented, um, these are just new, uh, affordable housing, are they not? They do not include, uh, affordable housing units that have been closed or sold off?
Through the chair, so the, the graph that was provided and the numbers break down the number of units before council, uh, adopted the commitment to 1,000 units, so we're not counting units before that commitment, and then we've identified units that have been completed and those that are, um, near completion. And we've also identified, um, projects that are, uh, on the horizon that have been identified that we're actively working on. Uh, I'm not sure what you're referring to with respect to closing off, if you're referring to projects that have been completed, I'm not sure.
Uh, well, okay, well, Brock, uh, last year lost a number of, uh, affordable, uh, rental units in Sunderland, and we just recently, uh, found out, uh, it's, as did the residents, that, uh, there will be more affordable, uh, rental units in Brock closed, so do these, you know, closures, uh, sales, uh, do they factor into any of the numbers anywhere, uh, when that happens?
Uh, through the chair, no, those numbers aren't, um, incorporated into this.
Okay, um, and, you know, you mentioned in your presentation a number of, uh, funding avenues available through various, uh, governments, including the region, uh, is, is it pretty typical that, uh, there is a requirement for that 25 years of, of, you know, affordable housing being provided, is that a pretty typical number?
Through the chair, yes, it is.
Okay, and, and what, what on average are the, uh, percentages of capital investment that those, that, that funding can go into? What's the, what's the maximum that, uh, any of that funding can go towards a capital project to build affordable housing?
Uh, through the chair, it's dependent on the project, so when we review, so I'm speaking right now to the AHIP program, uh, the at-home incentive program, uh, those projects are reviewed to ensure that we're getting pretty much the biggest bang for our buck with respect to the capital investment per unit, uh, based on unit size, of course, as well as affordability period, there's nothing stopping proponents from proposing, uh, an affordability, affordability period in excess of 25 years. Um, so those, all the projects are reviewed so that we get the biggest benefit for our dollar. Um, the federal provincial programs, um, do have a cap, uh, at the top of my head, I'm, I don't remember what that is, I think it's somewhere around 150,000 per unit, um, which was significant when it was costing about 200,000 to build, uh, now we're looking at 400, 500,000 dollars to build a unit, uh, so that's, often, often it's difficult, even with these programs, for developers to, uh, make the projects financially sustainable.
But percentage-wise, maybe it's around a, a quarter of the, the capital, uh, investment could be obtained through funding?
Um, it could be a quarter, it could be less, uh, through the at-home program, we saw projects where, um, less was being requested, it really depends on the project, and if it incorporates market units as well, then they're able to kind of give us more of a deal, because the market units are subsidizing, uh, those, uh, affordable units.
Okay, um, it, and just to confirm, so at the end of the 25-year period, even though, uh, various levels of government may have sunk 25% of the capital investment in, at the end of the 25 ye, years, who, whoever is the recipient of that to build, uh, the capital, uh, supportive, or affordable housing, uh, they're free to then do whatever they want, they can sell off, uh, uh, the, the, the building, they can, they can, uh, switch it to more of a, a profitable, non-affordable housing, is, is that the case, that at the end of the 25-year period, they can pretty much do as they wish?
Uh, through the chair, the initial programs, the, um, the Affordable Housing Program, um, where there's private proponents at the end of their affordability period, yes, they are free to, uh, do with the property and charge rents at turnover, um, uh, rents that are more in line with the market. Those federal provincial programs have changed, and they restrict applicants to nonprofit housing providers. So currently, that, uh, federal provincial funding is only available to, uh, nonprofit housing providers, who are generally in the game of maintaining their housing, uh, at an affordable level as part of their, um, uh, their business model.
Yeah, no, I understand that, and, and as I mentioned, the, the reason for my questions was that Brock has lost, although, yes, we're on the, the boards, uh, to, that we have received some, uh, you know, new affordable housing in the past, where, we're on the boards here to, to receive, of course, the supportive housing, um, but we have, just in the last year, lost units, we are in the process of losing more units, uh, from, uh, from affordable housing, uh, agencies or corporations, uh, and these people, these people are not gonna be qualified, uh, to, to go into supportive housing. Um, they are going to become homeless or be forced to leave, uh, the area, uh, just due to a complete lack of, of affordable housing options, so it's, it's a little discouraging that, uh, that these units are, are being sold off, uh, and these individuals, uh, that, you know, everybody wants to help, are being, uh, essentially forced onto the streets. So that, that was my reasoning for my questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, councillor Brenner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, I'm through you, Alan, and then thank you, uh, for the fantastic presentation, um. In your initial couple of slides, you identified at one point 13 affordable, 13 units in Pickering, and then a subsequent slide, when you were talking about, uh, another program, you identified 18 units in Pickering. Are those two separate statistics, uh, that, that pertain to the city of Pickering? For two, uh, for different type of projects?
Uh, through the chair, those are two separate projects.
Picking up on that, the other thing that, that, that staff pointed out in the report is, or in your presentation, was that part of the challenge in the West, and it certainly is reflected by the 2%, which is certainly substantively lower than when you get further across into eastern Durham region, along the, along the Lakeshore area, um, that the costs are greater in the West. In the city of Pickering, we've now, um, um, approved to put in place an office of affordability tied to our planning department, um, to be able to find ways to work with, uh, with, with your department, Alan, in terms of ideas for how to make units much more affordability, to be able to take that 2% and set a much higher target by increasing the numbers of units within the city of Pickering. Has your area had any, I guess, had any discussion with different incentives or ideas that can guide the lower tier, in our case, the city of Pickering, and perhaps probably the town of Ajax, um, to be able to increase that percentage, since, um, it's obviously growing not just in, uh, the eastern part of the region, but right across all the Durham region, and we need to do a better job and do our part in the city of Pickering?
Through the chair, uh, first, just to clarify, the 18 units are in Whitby, so we're just looking at 13 affordable housing units in Pickering?
13, not 18.
Yeah, 13. Um, so with our at-home incentive program, that's open to all developments within the region, um, so, um, that, um, when we're looking at those projects, uh, if you remember, there was, um, the initial allocation for the at-home incentive program, which I believe was 5.5, and additional resources were directed to the at-home incentive program, uh, for this Pickering project, because, as I've mentioned, it's challenging to get units in Pickering, uh, and it's a great proponent, uh, that we want to continue to partner with. So, um, yes, we're always looking at those partnerships across the region, uh, and anywhere where we can squeeze in some units in Pickering and Ajax, uh, we definitely look at those to see if we can, uh, we can get those units, because they're challenging to find.
When you're talking about that it's, it's challenging, um, can you just clarify a little bit more in terms of what, what those challenges are, so that we can find better ways, again, at the lower tier, um, to help, uh, reduce those challenges, uh, through other creative approaches that we may have at our disposal, with your expertise?
Through the chair, I think primarily because of the proximity to Toronto, um, the housing prices and the rental, uh, costs, or the rental, uh, charge in those areas, is a premium. So for a private developer to consider affordable housing, um, when they can generate significant revenues, uh, because of their location, um, they generally aren't interested in partnering with us. The partnership in Pickering that, um, we entered into through the at-home incentive program, uh, was a very special partnership that was, um, partnership with the United Church and their strategic initiative, looking at church sites and, uh, developing housing on those sites. Uh, so that's why I mentioned it's very important for us to, uh, engage this partnership, uh, because it opens up a lot of opportunity for other sites across Durham region, where houses of worship have, um, uh, excess land that can be developed on.
Alan, do we have any flexibility, I guess, when we're looking at the region, regional policies, as it relates to what kind of incentives that we're able to do that can be different in the western part of the region, given that the challenges are much greater, or is it a one, one-size-fits-all approach, um, that we don't have that kind of flexibility?
Through the chair, that's something that council would have to decide for any sort of incentive programs. Um, I should note as well that the region does have the Regional Revitalization Program, the RRP, so if there are local CIPs, uh, that are developed, uh, then there's an opportunity to piggyback on the RRP, the regional RRP.
Thank you, Alan, and what I'll do, I'll, I'll let our, our staff know that once we have the new staff person in place for office affordability, we definitely reach out to you. we definitely reach out to you. You've done some great partnerships. I know you worked, helped with the Habitat for Humanity. You're working with some other developers currently and some other ones, I believe, where we, well, Tribute was Habitat for Humanity, and I believe the ones that we're working on right now. I think you've had had somebody from Chestnut Hill reach out to you as well. So you guys have been doing a great job trying to get our developers to to have a greater social conscience. And thank you and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Firstly, Madam CEO, Madam Commissioner, Mr. Director, I want to thank you for the work that you've done. Chair Henry, you're bang on. We've we've come through a pandemic. We've made goals prior to a pandemic dealing with vastly increasing land prices, a lack of material, a lack of labor, and and those impediments are still in front of us today. We are the body that resources staff. If we don't resource them, and there's going to be a vote on this a little bit later on, if we don't resource them and we are critical of our progress.
So Mayor Foster, thank you.
I'm going to stop right there.
But it's question.
Questions. Mr. Robbins, this you've heard this from me before. Are you aware of 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 any federal incentives that go directly to the private sector? And you're well aware of my opinion that government can't fix this. So has the, you know, federal or or provincial government, are they incenting private development to get some, to increase the amount of rental and possibly affordable rental?
Through the chair, the federal program, the Construction Financing Program, is available to private developers. There have been some take up of that in Durham. But I would say that as far as the level of affordability, it is in no way affordable. And based on the calculation, often the affordable rent is higher than prevailing market rents. So, for example, in Ajax, they look at the community where the development is built. They look at the median income, and the incomes are generally pretty good. And then they look at 30% of that income to determine what affordable rents are. So really, it's affordable rents for people who are earning a good living. So the program doesn't really work, and I wouldn't consider it an affordable housing program.
So I can tell you, I I met with the mayor of St. John, New Brunswick. They are dealing with the exact same thing there. Are there things that we should be advocating with at the federal government? And I brought this up time and again, you know, to be pushing them to to bring some some private to in here. Or better yet, can you tell me how to advocate? Can you tell us? Would you would you take that as direction, please?
Through the chair, we're always advocating for programs that actually create affordable housing. And I'm sure we'll be providing some feedback on the Housing Accelerator Fund and the challenges and the difficulty in reaching positive outcomes. Where there is going to be an investment, and any investment is great, providing a program or an incentive that is as complicated and convoluted as this program doesn't benefit anyone, in my opinion.
I think what I'm looking for and what I'm asking for is that you provide each and every one of us, as we are talking to our MPs, a common theme and for the work we do at FCM, Mr. Chair, you know, a common theme that that we push forward for this. I'm I'm going to switch gears. I may have the number wrong, but I I think in Durham, we've got 90-plus providers of of housing, large and small?
Generally, depending whether you're looking at projects or the providers, because some providers have multiple projects.
Well, I think this is for affordable and subsidized housing. It doesn't make any sense at all to look at combining. I've got to believe, and my body may never be found for making this statement publicly, but I've I've got to believe that there are some efficiencies to be had in in looking at some of these smaller providers and in bringing administration and whatnot together. Has anyone has anyone looked at that?
Through the chair, so when you're speaking of the smaller providers, those would be smaller nonprofits and co-ops that we do not control. So we provide subsidy to them through the legislation, but we don't control their boards. We do have discussions with them with respect to amalgamations, but that can be challenging, especially with co-ops just by their very nature. So we're very limited with those smaller providers to to nudge them towards amalgamation. For larger housing providers, such as Durham Nonprofit Housing Corporation and the Local Housing Corporation, that analysis has been done, I think, twice in the past with respect to sort of like the critical size and operational efficiencies. And I believe both times, both organizations were at their sort of critical mass.
Okay, would you please put in your calendar to give me a shout because I'd like to follow up on on this. Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you for the latitude earlier on.
Thank you, Counselor Pickles.
Thank you, and thank you to the CEO, the Commissioner, and yourself, Alan, for the information you gave us today. The question I have, and it may have, I think it's been answered in bits and pieces along here, but you've given us a picture of a presentation of what we're doing, what our role is, what we've been involved in. But I I'd like to get your take of of the larger picture and how we're capturing or monitoring it. For example, in Pickering, we have a a project that's being undertaken by Trillium. And it's it's a program that makes available the opportunity for homeownership to people who normally would not be able to to afford homes. It's it's a system of second mortgages, much like options for homes were. We have some units coming in in one of the condominiums, the Tribute Condominium Habitat for Humanity. Some of those are two and three bedroom suites. And we have purpose-built rental that's occurring in Pickering. And I I don't know what the rates are going to be at the one on White's Road. But are we are we necessarily in the in the big picture when we're looking at what's being done out there, when you're reporting back to us? Are we capturing all of those other activities out there? Are you aware of all those? Are we talking to those proponents? Are we capturing and reporting on those units that are coming available? Or are we not getting the whole picture?
Through the chair, we're not necessarily capturing those units. We're focused on affordable housing units.
Yes.
And most of the rental stock that's being developed is at the higher, is at the market rent, which is not affordable. We are always, I speak with developers all the time. Now we have the tool, the At Home Incentive Program, which is great. So that gives private developers an opportunity to partner with us and get some upfront capital. I would say that when we talk about the pandemic and the challenges of the pandemic, we also saw a great deal of funding coming through the pandemic to help us build units. So some of those units may not have been built or would not have been built without that injection of capital. I think the bigger issue from the pandemic is the cost and the time it takes to develop. We're seeing the construction cost index, projects are increasing 50% in costs. And you can wait 18 months for windows, which adds to the cost. So you're looking at over 2% every quarter, development costs going up. So I think the biggest challenge right now is that cost factor that makes it very challenging to be able to provide affordable housing in a financially sustainable model. And that lead time, when we're talking about expediting development and getting things moving, you can only move as quickly as the slowest moving part of the project. And that often is the acquisition of either supplies or labor.
So so thanks for that. So we're talking a lot about rental units, but the Trillium project and the Tribute Habitat for Humanity is actually getting people into homeownership, which is a good thing. It's not nearly enough, and it's not nearly enough what we're doing to get people into affordable renting. But I just want to make sure that we we don't miss those opportunities. And if you're not aware of opportunities like Trillium, then I I think it would be a good idea if you were so that we can entice the nonprofit or the private sector to continue those initiatives and deliver units, both for homeownership and for rental that we may not be involved with. But through the chair, there's maybe ways through the permitting process and and the planning process and and other processes that we can help accelerate or incentivize those, maybe not in a monetary way. So I'll I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chair, but I'll leave an opportunity, Alan. We'd be happy to sit down with you. And as Counselor Brenner mentioned, we have offices of affordability in in Pickering to talk about these things that I I think we'd like to involve yourselves so that you're aware of all these other opportunities and how we can promote them in Pickering and across the region.
Yeah.
And make sure we we monitor and count those into the big picture.
Yeah, I should note that we have partnered with private developers for some of these affordable homeownership programs in the past. And we have a very good relationship with Habitat for Humanity and have partnered with them in the past. And I'm sure that we will be partnering with them in the future.
Excellent. So we'll we'll invite you over to Pickering one day. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor McDougal.
I was about to push the button again. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this. And certainly, the housing issue is not just Durham or Ontario. It's Canada-wide and further afield than that, for sure. In the States, you hear about it all the time. Knowing that the federal government is bringing in roughly about a million immigrants last year and has targets to bring in 500,000-plus immigrants a year into Canada, this is certainly exacerbating the housing shortages that we already have, certainly in the rental market plus plus any of the housing, other housing markets. Does the federal government have any lands in Durham, since land seems to be an issue? Have any lands in Durham that could be made available for possible housing for these types of projects? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair, at the beginning of our At Home Incentive Program and as a result of the seniors and Affordable Housing Task Force, we reached out to the province and to the federal government and to all the lower-tier municipalities to help identify any land that could be made available for affordable housing. Nothing was provided by the federal government, nor was it provided by the province. When we did have meetings with the province with respect to land across the street, this was, I think we're going on three years ago or more. It was before the pandemic, and looking at partnering with them on that piece of land because we have land adjacent to it. So it could it could lead to an incredible opportunity for mixed-income, mixed-use development. We've been pushing the province for the last over three years and have not been making much headway. So you may hear of the priorities of the province to expedite development and partner and making surplus lands available. But we are having we are having a lot of challenges actually seeing that come to fruition on a project that would be, I think, a huge success for the region.
Very good. That's disappointing to hear. Certainly, I'm just thinking in terms of the supply in the western areas of the region. Should the federal government have any surplus large amounts of land and they could cleave off a portion for affordable housing? Given that their policies are exacerbating this issue, perhaps the federal government specifically should be involved in providing some land for these for these options through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I'm not sure if those lands exist.
Mayor Carter.
Good morning. Yeah, it is, so. Good morning, sir. Alan, I'm going to try and get just real quick and fast. With both Durham Regional Nonprofit Housing and the Local Housing Authority, are you undertaking an exercise in regards to intensification of properties that we already own and redevelopment of those sites?
Yes, so we're working with Durham Nonprofit on their long-term sustainability plan and helping them achieve their goals, as well as our own strategic plan for the Local Housing Corporation.
Okay, so are you, is that then intensification as part of that process for the Local Housing Authority?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Would you state that the cost per square foot has escalated in the last three years to a point where, at one time, and I'm just using my knowledge that I have of it, of about $225 a square foot, now closer to $600 a square foot? Would you agree with that statement?
Through the chair, yes, I would.
And do you believe that that's been a huge obstacle in regards to trying to make the financial framework work, both with provincial, federal, regional, and dollars? Is that has that been a major hurdle?
Through the chair, yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Are you, to your knowledge, do you do you know if Durham Regional Nonprofit Housing Corporation or the Local Housing Authority are looking at creating development corporations within their organizations to try and create revenue so that they'll be able to redevelop or have more units on to be able to develop?
Through the chair, the DRLHC, the Local Housing Corporation, are looking at all options to help facilitate that.
To your knowledge, with the Durham Regional Local Housing Authority, are you looking at creating mixed-income communities to create different types of revenue streams and a balance in regards to healthy, vibrant neighborhoods?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Based upon some of the questions that you've heard today in regards to the cost of developing these homes, are you also taking under consideration any type of micro, modular home builds to see if that might be faster, more affordable as you plan into the future?
Through the chair, we are looking at modular development and have modular developments completed and in progress. I should note that although those projects are, can be quicker, from a cost perspective, they are not necessarily cheaper than traditional construction.
So I just want to get a clarification on that. Are you stating that microhomes or modular homes would be close to $600 a square foot?
Through the chair, they are more in line with traditional construction, whatever that square footage cost is.
Okay, would it, on a traditional build versus the module or micro home, is it a quicker process in regards to the development process, the approval process, and seeing the doors open? Is it is it a faster process?
Through the chair, from my understanding, the construction process is quicker because you can do the site work and the units at the same time, rather than building up, you build in.
Is it is it also your understanding that both Durham Regional Nonprofit Housing Corporation, the Local Housing Authority is trying to find more partners to be able to come up with innovative and creative ideas to be able to provide more units in in the region of Durham?
Through the chair, yes.
Would you say that one of the biggest hurdles that you face when you are trying to look for, especially infill in regards to these projects, nimbyism?
Based on our limited experience, it's definitely a consideration.
I do want to ask one last question, and that is, as you look forward to the 2025 to 2030 plan, do you have an expectation in regards to what type of number that you would like to achieve within that five-year period?
Through the chair, first, it's 2025 to 2035, so it will be another 10-year. It will be another 10-year housing plan. And when we do come to council in late 2024, we'll be making a recommendation as to what we believe that target should be, but it's ultimately the decision of council what our targets are.
Based upon your knowledge and the work that you do within your department, are you seeing any more more aggressive movement by both the federal government and provincial government to address this and work with regional governments to try and supply the housing needs in our communities?
Through the chair, I haven't seen any aggressive moves by the province or the federal government to increase the supply of affordable housing, more so than what has been done at a base level over previous years.
I appreciate all your responses in regards to my questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the opportunity to ask those questions.
Thank you, Counselor Wu.
Yeah, and through the chair, and thank you very much, Alan, for your presentation and answering all these questions. On Slide 8, Financial Housing Benefits, Low and Moderate Income Renters Need Rental Assistances to Make Rents Affordable. And you mentioned something earlier about this would be goal two. Can you speak to that?
Our goal, goal two, affordable rent for everyone. So by providing these portable housing benefits, either through the Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit or the Durham Portable Housing Benefit, that bridges the gap between an affordable rental level and and a market level. I wouldn't say, I can't say the actual rent because it works a little bit differently than other rent geared to income. But it does create a greater depth of affordability for those households.
Okay, and again, through the chair, follow up to that. I heard you mention a number of times, 30%. I heard you mention a number of times, 30%. Now, my understanding on the 30% is like a gross debt ratio. That's the amount that one would put towards rent or mortgage or whatever and insurance or whatever, and then the rest, you got to live. Now, if I'm looking at market rents, let's say, would you say $2,100 or $2,000 about it? Or what would you say is?
Through the Chair, it can range, for a one-bedroom, probably around $2,000 average.
Okay. So you look at 30% of, let's say, $2,000, you're a little over $600. Now, is the rental assistance to make rent affordable, is somebody subsidizing the $1,400?
So through the portable housing benefits, the benefit is the bridge between 30% of the individual's income, as declared on their tax return, and a level of average market rent that differs between the COB and the at-home incentive program. So, and it also depends on whether the individual is in receipt of Ontario Works or ODSP. So there are definitely some nuances, but it definitely does increase the level of affordability, whether it's a true 30% of income, they might be paying 40 or 50. And also, the individuals have a choice. Under those programs, they can live somewhere that's more expensive if they choose to spend 50% of their income on rent because it's a good location for their kids or for whatever other reason. It gives people choices, and that's one of the goals of the plan, housing plan, is to create greater housing choices for individuals.
Right. And would you find those housing choices of what's being built, what is the need? Is it one bedrooms, a one-bedroom or two bedrooms? Or I don't think you're building too many three bedrooms, but what is the need?
Through the Chair, if you look at our dash waitlist, over 8,000 people, there's a need across the entire spectrum, although single non-seniors are in particular need because they only have one income that comes in. If they're on social assistance, the shelter allowance, they receive $300 or up to $600 a month. It's nowhere close. Even renting a room in Durham Region, I think we're up to close to $1,000 a month to rent a room.
Now, having said that, if somebody had a basement apartment and had a room, would we assist on that, or that is more through the social services, the housing section, which you are part of?
Through the Chair, if a recipient of one of the portable benefits is renting in a basement, that's fine.
Okay. And no, thank you very much. I want to thank you and the CIO and the Commissioner, and I look forward to seeing you later today at the Claretton Task Force on Affordable Housing, and we can go through this all again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, that exhausts all requests to speak. Thank you. One final question. Last night, along with Mayor Ash, I had the opportunity to attend a speaker series in Pickering, and there was a professor from the University of Toronto there talking about kind of a unique housing project in California involving Habitat. And what it was, was the owners of a home, a big home with a big lot. Habitat would have a garden-style suite built behind the property, and then Habitat would take over that house because somebody in their 70s doesn't want to do that. Have you heard anything of that in Ontario or Canada yet?
Through the Chair, from my discussions with Habitat for Humanity, I haven't heard of that program, although I have been speaking with my colleagues in planning with respect to providing additional information to residents on secondary suites that include backyard sort of microhomes, so people in each area municipality know what they're able to do and how they might go about it and who some of the providers are, so to provide them with that sort of information. But I haven't heard from Habitat of a program like that in Canada.
Maybe if, Mayor Ash, can you connect our team with the professor from the University of Toronto last night who presented that comments? And it is an interesting way to create more housing. Okay, thank you very much for today.
Thank you.
Members of council, we have a number of things on the agenda. I'm going to have to stop at 12:30. A number of members of staff have another event in the building that they have to attend to, so we will break at 12:30 for lunch, and we will move on. Question, Mayor Ash?
No, I can move instead.
Okay. So we're now, there are no delegations, no correspondence. We move to reports. Mayor Ash is moving reports, 7.1, 2, 7.6, seconded by Counselor Anderson. Polls. Mayor Foster.
7.2. I've got an amendment to that. I don't think it's going to be controversial. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, 7.2. Counselor Leahy?
7.1. 7.5.
Okay. Members of council, other polls. So the items that have been polled have been 7.1, 2, and 5. On the remainder, I'll call, on the remainder, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, Counselor Leahy on 7.1.
Perfect. Thank you. So on this particular report, the Durham Greener Homes Program, like there was the announcement in May about the Durham's Homes Heating Initiative, and they were expanding that to Pickering, Oshwa, I mean Pickering, Ajax, and Whitby. So for that heat pump program that's recommended, is that going to be run through the region? And is that actually now live, is my first question?
We'll go to Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you. Through the Chair to you, Counselor Leahy. So the Clean Home Heating Initiative will be delivered through Enbridge in conjunction with their existing Home Energy retrofit programs. The Durham Greener Homes Program Coach is fully aware of the details of that and will help to refer eligible participants to that program once it's live. It's not currently live and available to the public. I understand that their next step is to develop a list of pre-qualified contractors that are eligible to deliver that program. Our interest is ensuring that that list is as large as possible to ensure a competitive marketplace. We know that in some of the jurisdictions where that program was initially launched, there's, you know, only two contractors, which creates some competitiveness and cost concerns potentially if someone isn't able to get, you know, a number of quotes.
Okay, fair enough. So I guess, so we basically just don't have the timing for when that's going live yet, just because I've got questions about that. So that's really, that's a fair answer. We have no idea when that's going to start then.
Mr. McVeigh?
At this point, no, but I'll take this as an opportunity to follow up with Enbridge and the ministry and get some more details, and I'd be happy to relay those to you.
Yeah, no, that would be great because just as those questions come up, just, again, good announcement, happy to do any incentives to help people out, but just want to know timing, even just to give people a rough idea. Perfect. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions on the item. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. 7.2, Mayor Foster requests to speak, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The clerk has an amendment that I would like to attach to the report, if they can put it on the screen. And I've got to, this is seconded by Counselor Anderson. I'll speak briefly to it. And thank you to staff for putting this together. Anyone who knows my style knows that I would not have been nearly as eloquent as you are, Mr. Jagnaffen, and thank you in this. Essentially, there are a couple of things here. One is with automated speed enforcement. We are restricted where we can put the equipment now. I think everyone would agree that in the last municipal election, and for those of us in the elections prior to that, the number-one concern that we heard was poor driving habits and speeding on our local roads. So this asks the province to allow us not just to put it in community safety zones, but schools as well. The other speaks to the requirement for 90-day advance and putting signs up for red light cameras to shorten that period. I note with interest, I drive by the camera on a daily basis at Curtis Road and Highway 2. Despite the fact that the sign is up and the camera is there, and the sign has been up and the camera has been there for many months now, people continue to ignore both and go through. I'm not sure that limiting the restriction, you can avoid the ticket by simply stopping at a red light, or in the case of the automated speed enforcement, by simply paying attention to the speed limits. Mr. Chair, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson is the seconder to the amendment.
Just echo what Mayor Foster has just said. And on average, I get at least two calls or emails a day and speeding and anything we can do. It's not a tax grab. It's a matter of public safety and I, you know, so that's number-one priority for me. So I support this amendment, and I hope my colleagues will do the same. Thank you.
Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is not new. I think it even went to AMO in the last meeting that I was, well, the only meeting I've been to so far. And I don't know that we've actually heard anything from the government on this at all. Many municipalities have asked for this, including, like I said, including coming from AMO. So has staff received any kind of response from any ministry on this, on moving this forward?
Mr. Jagnaffen?
Yeah, through the Chair, through the Chair to the Counselor. No, we have not heard anything, but I hear there's a common interest among the municipalities that parks waiting now, and these two relaxations, if I can use the term, are really primary in their mind because they are very limiting in terms of leveraging the tool to the maximum benefit.
So if I'm not mistaken, each camera has a limit to how many tickets can go on that can be issued, correct?
That hopefully is a temporary limitation due to the constraints at the Joint Processing Center, and we are hoping, for example, like, you know, City of Ottawa is looking at doing their own joint processing center because everyone wants to expand these cameras, and the Joint Processing Center in Toronto is becoming a bottleneck. And we're all hoping that City of Ottawa would do it, and which frees up more capacity for us at the Joint Processing Center in Toronto. But the challenge is they are looking at doubling and tripling the number of cameras as well at some point, I think. Obviously, they're going to give priority to City of Toronto because they are running it.
So ideally, we would like to have a Durham Reporting Center. I mean, it's become quite a project here in Durham, correct?
Yeah, in the longer term, I think that would be the solution once we have the administrative penalty system coming in, and especially with the local municipalities, if they start to participate in this more aggressively, to be fair, like, you know, there is probably more demand for these cameras on local roads, given the school zones, for example. Like, most of them have accesses on local roads and larger road network as well. At some point, I think we will need our own joint processing centers, such, you know, many other agencies are looking at it as well, including City of Ottawa.
Because without that removal or expansion of the reporting center, doesn't matter, you can add to as many roads as you want to and take off any limitations you want, you're not necessarily getting more tickets. Now, it might not, it might still, it still works as a calming factor, just being on the road, because people don't know when the camera goes on or off, right? But you're not really ticketing any more.
Yeah, through the Chair, but we have the ability to reduce the number of hours of operation.
Right.
Right? Potentially just to peak hours and so on, like, you know, but you're right, there comes a point where you cannot add more cameras and, because the bottleneck is really at the processing end.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Schumer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, and I support this. I'm just wondering if I could ask, I guess, Mayor Foster, why 10 days? I'd be all for zero.
We're struggling to hear you, Mayor Schumer. Can you say that again, please?
I guess my question is, why 10 days? Because quite frankly, I'd be fine with that being reduced to no notice, but I'm just wondering, a question to Mayor Foster, why the 10-day period was chosen?
Mayor Foster?
Yeah, so Mayor Schumer, that was a recommendation by staff, and again, full disclosure to everyone, I asked staff to prepare this. I'm going to guess, you would have to ask the acting commissioner that they'd probably prefer no notice, but maybe you ask for something that you hope you can get as opposed to something that you don't think you're going to be able to get.
Mr. Jagnaffen?
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Yeah, through the Chair, obviously, no notice is required because when a police officer goes on the road, they're not giving any notice. But I suppose the 10 days was just, you know, some, trying to strike some balance that is not extremely unpopular, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Grog?
Thank you, Chair. Certainly support Mayor Foster's motion and agree with Counselor Anderson regarding the number-one complaints that we get locally. Just a simple request that on the final portion of the resolution, that it also be forwarded to all municipalities within Durham Region so that each of our councils could consider supporting it as well.
Yeah, we'll just take that as friendly directions. No problem. Okay, thank you. Counselor Nicholson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if the movers would accept a small amendment to add the words "not more than 10 days" rather than "affirm 10 days."
To the mover? Okay.
I think that gives us the flexibility to lobby for zero.
Just one second. To the seconder? Okay. Continue, please.
Yeah. I think that gives us the ability to say to the province, like, if you're willing to accept zero, we'll accept zero, too. I know with all members of regional council and local councils, this is the number-one issue that we have, speeding of vehicles within our communities. I probably get twice or even three times as many calls on this item as I get on all my other items combined. And people don't understand why we can put it on certain roads, but on other regional roads, we can't, and on local roads, we can't, if there's not a school attached. But we've got parks, we've got senior centers, we've got community centers, daycares. They don't meet the criteria but are just as important to protect for safety as we can. And of course, in some of our regional roads and community zones, I have one road in my ward which is a regional community safety zone, then it morphs into a local community safety zone, and then it morphs into a parkland. It's the same road, and it's a heavily trafficked road. It's called St. Paul Street South. And we had to actually, you know, bend the rules as best we can to have both regional and local municipalities declare their sections community safety zones rather than be able to work well together. I've been tempted, and I've said this to staff in the past, I'd be tempted to move an entire motion that declares the region of Durham a community safety zone and get them all, get every street in Durham Region under that banner. My fear is the current process is not so much oriented towards safety and trying to reduce speed, but these standards that limit the amount and limit the time and signs, they're political decisions made by the province in order to somehow eliminate what they perceive could be a backlash against the whole idea of automatic speed enforcement program. I had a discussion yesterday online, and somebody was complaining about these, and I said very simply to them, put them out of business. Make them totally untenable for the region by following the speed limit. There are people that get impacted by these units, and one's driving faster than the speed limit. And I can tell you, some of my streets, they may be 40-kilometer limits, but the cars are traveling at 70 and 80 kilometers regularly in front of schools, in front of daycares, in front of parkland. You take your life in your hands, in some cases, trying to cross the road, or even just exit your own driveway onto the road because people are just coming at you very fast. So I wholeheartedly support this motion. I think it's something to do. Now that we have paid lobbyists to help us at the region, at provincial level, perhaps this could be added to their workload as well, to reach out to the ministry. this could be added to their workload as well to reach out to the ministry and encourage them to move more expeditiously on this motion. But it's a very simple equation. If you don't ask, you don't get. So I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you. Counselor Crawford?
Thank you for letting me back in. I think that the signage thing was kind of, the government was still licking their wounds over the photo radar, I think, went out on the 401, and so they felt the signage needed to be up to actually really warn people. And I think now that, I, I would like to hope that since the program has been, you know, it's been around for now really about, you know, really aggressively in the last four or five years, and Toronto has them everywhere, you know, I think it would be great if they could lessen the load on the signage because it is really labor-intensive to have to get out there and remember to do that sign change. Oh, God, I'm, I'm getting old. I forgot my question. Sorry. I apologize. I did have a question, but for the life of me, I cannot remember it, so have to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor John Neal on the amendment? Counselor Neal?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm just wondering around that final paragraph, that this resolution be permitted to all municipalities currently. I mean, it's listing some cities there, Ajax. Is Oshawa not on that or do we, do I need clarification from the commissioner?
No, we've taken that as a friendly.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other one wishing to comment on the amendment? Call the vote, then, Mr. Clerk, call the vote on the amendment. All those in favor? In opposition? Hearing none on the item as amended? We'll call that vote. All those in? Okay, questions to the main motion, please. Counselor Leahy?
I was waiting till the main motion came up because those were my questions, not on the amendment. Thank you for that. So again, reviewing the report, so can we say that overall that we are, I'm trying to understand the chart on table five in the report on item 7.7. So I guess how much money are we losing? So we saw we lose money and, you know, it was only about 60K 2022 actual, but we're budgeting a $1.5 million loss for 2023? Do I interpret that correctly?
So if I may through the chair, in this case, brackets mean a net revenue. So we're projecting for 2022 a net revenue of almost 64,000 that would be then allocated 60, 40 across the, the locals in the region. For 2023, there's an important note there that we've kept the fine revenue at what the budget was the prior year, and it was two and some million short last year. So the 1.5 million projected revenue for 2023 is not likely to materialize because of the limitations with respect to how many can be processed. So that's been part of the challenge in bringing this report is trying to cement any numbers is very, very difficult.
No, I understand, and I recognize we have to make projections. I guess the challenge is, is that as the processing capacity drops, so it's almost like paying, you know, speed fine roulette. You can go through the camera, but if the, if the processing capacity isn't there, you're not going to get the fine and we're not going to get the revenue. And as they add more cameras, that's going to get worse unless these, the facilities are improved. Is that not correct?
So if I may through the chair, that is a very valid concern that we all have and certainly our regional solicitor who oversees the, the court process also has identified limitations with how much we can rely on the revenue. That being said, I think really the critical focus here, that certainly this council has talked about, is the point of the cameras is all about changing behavior and trying to get some really good successes. And so that's really from, particularly from works, but also from, from, from legal and myself. The revenue, we're not anticipating essentially to have anything here. What we really want to do is, is, is have some real wins on behavior.
And 100%. To me, the program's successful if we don't make a dollar in fines because that means actually everyone's following the speed limit, which would be nice. But my other fear, again, on the costs is, if I under, and please clarify if my understanding is incorrect, but within the report, it's talking about this is only the, the costs of running the program. It's actually not the staff costs, it's not the capital costs, it's not, so what, A, that's question one.
So that's correct. What we've done here, the POA court costs cannot be separated out by types of fines and even the revenues themselves by camera, by location, cannot be separated out. Again, our regional solicitor can talk about the software from the, I think, the 70s that the province forces us to use for this. So there's huge limitations there. So when we're trying to sort out the revenue piece to that, there's, again, huge limitations on how we can try to figure out how to allocate. So certainly that the revenue piece is a great concern and, and not predictable in, in any particular fashion.
Yeah, and I guess, my thing is the unco, again, I'm just looking for full transparency. I'm not saying no one's being transparent, but we're saying within the report, we're not covering our total staff costs and we're not covering our capital costs. So if I was just to read this table, it's like, oh, it's, it's not bad, we're only losing a little bit of money. But that's not including the full costs of running the program. And again, I'm fully supportive of this program. Please don't misinterpret my questions. It's all around cost.
Through the chair, you're quite correct. So for example, both for us and the locals that are currently participating, we are only charging to this little budget that you see, the actual third-party costs of invoices that we have to pay on a per-unit basis that we're being invoiced. We are not factoring in Works Department costs in, you know, moving these, assessing them, doing all kinds, all the work that they do and all the work they do around Vision Zero. None of that's reflected here and the same is true for Ajax and Pickering's costs that are here. We have simply repaid them their third-party out-of-pocket costs that have been invoiced just to process this system.
Yeah, so I guess just where would I see those costs? Because again, I'm fully supportive, I want to expand this program, but I also want to work and be fully transparent and aware of all the costs. So it's, where do we see that information or is it coming back in another report?
So through the chair, a lot of those costs are simply embedded in our current processes. So we're not really trying to attempt to assign every dollar of every staff that may have an attachment to this. Certainly, Works has done some analysis on some, I guess, easier to carve out costs, but there isn't really any way to fully allocate every single, you know, related cost to running the, this and the Vision Zero program. We do have a reserve there as well to help subsidize the capital activities, but there isn't any real easy way to allocate all of those out. So those are, those are, I guess, contribution to safety and not tied to these particular programs.
Again, and, and, fully supportive, again, great initiative, we support that. I just, to me, to expand a program is, it's challenged when we're not identifying all the costs because they're buried in our operations. And then there's this unknown huge risk of processing capacity. And again, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if we add more cameras and they can't get processed, you're like, was it 20 hours a day it's not working? 21, 22, 23? Is it only working 10 minutes a day? Like, that's, do we have that visibility?
So if I may, I'll actually, I'll see whether a regional solicitor, I know that, my understanding is from the limitations of the Toronto Processing Center, that they pretty much give us a cap of what they're prepared to do. But that being said, it may not be a real actual number, but perhaps our regional solicitor can help in that.
Mr. Hutt?
And probably our, my colleagues in Works are a bit more familiar with the caps coming out of the JPC, which is the Joint Processing Center. They are basically at their capacity and their priority. It's a City of Toronto operation, their priority is for the City of Toronto charges. So there's limits from the joint processing capacity that we are already at. And if we put new charges into the system, you know, those, those will be processed, but we'll have to start prioritizing, I think, on our end. And of course, it hasn't been raised today, but in addition to the limits of the Joint Processing Center, there are limits for those charges which are disputed, there are limits for the POA Court as well. And we're currently operating a court that used to have pre-pandemic four courtrooms operational, but due to a lack of judicial resources, now has two courtrooms operational. So that is a concern as well. Only a concern for the charges that get disputed, so, you know, I think it's in the neighborhood of plus 80% of the charges which are issued are, are paid without really seeing the inside of a courtroom. But, but that's also an issue down the road that hopefully will be addressed by Ministry of Attorney General, but there's a lot on the plate of the province to get us back operational.
Yeah, no, and again, and I appreciate that. Like, I, I want more cameras, I want a safer community, I want it to be speeding, but if, if we're going to be installing these things and they're not going to be capturing tickets and they're not going to be processed, like, it's just, it's, it sounds like there's a lot of risk from what we know right now. Is that fair?
Well, I do think there is the capacity, I mean, we've got a pretty great program in terms of cooperation at, at the Vision Zero level, so I think there's a lot of visibility within that program as to what the limits of the JPC are, what is their capacity to increase that. And, and I think for the local tiers who are participating, I think there's a lot of opportunity for coordination. So if there is a proposed investment from the Town of Whitby, for example, you wouldn't, I don't think, have to make that investment blindly, that there would be the opportunity to have conversation with people at the region who are working directly with the JPC. So, and, and we could assist in understanding what would be the capacity, what would be the implications. I mean, if we're only having to limit the hours of operation to, to the peak times, we're still going to be pretty effective probably in addressing the issue. And certainly, we can look at certain cameras and give some advice as to, you know, what is the volume of charges in the hours that it would be shut off? It might be minimal. So, so that conversation can take place, I think, among your staff and ours to, to help you plan out any investments.
Yeah, so I understand because, yeah, just, again, putting in cameras that we know we're going to have to shut off at times, I guess, as long as we get the peak times, we're at least ahead. But the point is, to me, it's ideal if we're going to do all this effort and it should be working 24/7. And then finally, my final question is around, are we exploring with the, the changes at the province around, you know, my language is not correct, but using third parties to do the summary tickets for, that they do out in Calgary and they're expanding into other municipalities in Ontario where we don't have to go through the joint, going through Toronto? Are we looking at exploring that at all?
Well, you know, as, as mentioned, Ottawa is already looking at setting up their own joint processing center. So it's not cutting out a joint processing center, just setting up a different one. I know their conversations more, more close to home in Central East, which is, you know, ourselves and York, Peterborough, Barry. So there's already been discussions about the possibility of, of a joint processing center for those groups. So capacity is an issue, but the way that it's administered and the priority that's assigned to Toronto charges is, is a policy issue that we can solve by operating our own or one that we had more participation in.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, again, fully supportive of that. My only concern is around spending the money and getting into work all the time. So I appreciate the efforts of staff and fully support the program. Thank you.
Mayor Schumer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you to staff, just to confirm, are the statistics in this program being shared with Durham Regional Police?
Mr. Jagnathan?
Yes, they, they do get discussed at the Vision Zero Task Force Forum, which is on a monthly basis. But I don't think we have come to the level of coordinating our deployment with their deployment and that, that to me would be the next step so that I suppose they can do better things compared to what technology can do. So it does get discussed at the Vision Zero Task Force Meeting, which is roughly once a month.
Okay, I, I would support it being a little bit more formalized. They, DRPS has come to brought counsel a number of times. They bring with them their statistics, but they don't, of course, have the statistics for this program. And I think it would be very useful to them and local municipalities to fully understand where, you know, this, these traffic problems are with relation to charges and tickets being issued. So I, I would encourage staff to maybe formally communicate the statistics and, and of course, with, with helping DRPS on their deployment. That would, that would be an excellent point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jagnathan, did you want to comment?
Yeah, no, we, we certainly will share this report with DRPS and make it a point to have this on the next agenda, to go through the stats and get their feedback.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say that I want to thank Durham Region for its vision in Vision Zero because it really is the most effective form of road calming that I think we've ever done. The stats show, Stephen, I think I might get this wrong, but is it 60% reduction or is that too high? It's lower than that? 40? 30?
It's about a 30%.
30%, yeah, 30%, which is huge because no other road, no, no other road calming that we've tried has ever been that effective. But, and, and, you know, people at the beginning thought that it was going to be a cash grab and we were accused of putting it up to be a cash grab. And now that they know that it isn't a cash grab, we don't, I never get any pushback on, on the cameras whatsoever. In fact, they want more. And to Regional Counselor Leahy's point, I don't, I believe that Durham does this too. We have speed boards that record all the time, all the time. So we know in Ajax where our, our ASE cameras are going to go. We know exactly the point of time where speeding occurs the most. So it's, and I believe that even when the cameras are removed, that Durham Region has the same form, it's not a speed camera, but I think there's, is it an Armadillo or something that goes up there? And, and it's recording the speeds so that they know when it is most effective to have cameras on. So I think there's ways that you can strategically, is it an Armadillo? Did I get it right? Okay. I was thinking octopus, but. And so there are strategic ways to be able to know when your camera goes on effectively for, for the, the time that it's on. But I, I know I'm supposed to have a question, right? I just wondered, at what point will we look at, at taking, at, will Durham Region take over even the Ajax Pickering Road Vision Zero program and just have it under one umbrella? Because to me, I feel like, you know, when you're looking for government efficiencies, that program has been running for a number of years now. And I think it makes sense to take, to, I can't speak on behalf of Pickering, but on behalf of Ajax, we would be more than willing to give that program over and let it all fall under the same umbrella. Anyway, I think it's something that, that we should look at at some point, and that is my question, will we be able to look at? A long-winded question.
Mr. Jagnathan?
Yeah, I, I think the timing for that, Counselor, through the chair, would be once we sort out the JPC issue, right? Like, you know, the region is looking to expand with more cameras, certainly Ajax, I'm sure, is aspiring to, and Oshawa wants to come on board. I really think, like, we need to sort this out with the JPC end. And equally important, we're going to go into an administrative monetary penalty system or AMPs, it's called, right? Those things have to come together. And just a note I would like to make though, like, you know, if, if having our own JPC is, is really a prerequisite for the region to take over a program, that is not an insignificant undertaking. It is, it'll be a long journey, like, you know, we need to look at the feasibility implementation. And I know, like, there, there will be other agencies, like, you know, Ramara Township, they have approached us a few times and City of Kowarta Lakes, I think, is looking at it. So, but I think the time has come to at least have that conversation. We will continue our discussions with the JPC and then collectively we need to move on.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nicholson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have we considered as part of the fine or penalty phase, including AMPs, so that the people who offend, the people that are causing the need for enforcement, are actually paying for the administration of the program?
If I may through the chair, perhaps, perhaps Jason might comment on our work with respect to implementing an AMP system and his discussions with the, with the locals on that?
Yeah, I've been embarrassed to be speaking to a counselor from Oshawa about an APS program because Oshawa is probably the leader in the province in implementing administrative monetary penalties. But no, we have, we have a project underway to enable the region as well as participating local tiers to use administrative penalty system in order to process these particular camera charges. That is permitted under the legislation now and we hope to have that program up and running sometime next year and made available to the local tiers to participate in as well. This, of course, allows us to bypass the court system, which can be slower, it can be expensive because of the cost of the justices of the peace. And of course, it doesn't provide as a convenient level of service to people who may wish to come and either pay their ticket or dispute their ticket in some way. You know, Counselor Nicholson, as you're familiar with, from the City of Oshawa, you know, you are able to provide a much more convenient hours and, and things like that, which, you know, encourages payment, but is also a bit better service level to, to the people who are using the system.
Well, I thank you for the answer and I'm really pleased to hear that.
Well, I thank you for the answer. I'm really pleased to hear that. I've been advocating this for years, as Emilio in Ashwa knows. Every time we have a meeting, I'm chattering on about offend or pay, as I call it. Why should a good taxpayer that doesn't cause problems have to pay more than the person that's causing the offense? And before A M Ps, that was the case. We were spending more on enforcement than we were collecting in penalty. And there comes a point where, you know, those that simply won't take their lead foot off the pedal, you know, have to start paying the costs, not just of the the penalty phase, but also the administrative cost. It's hard to ask a taxpayer that follows the rules to have to reach into their pocket to pay for the enforcement for those that won't. And I think this is something that the region has to become very aggressive on, not just on this issue, but on a wide range of enforcement issues. That those that create the problem pay for it as opposed to the good taxpayer who follows the rules being asked to pay for it. So I'm very pleased to hear that answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Chair. Counselor Leahy covered the questions I had, but when the time comes, can I have recorded vote, please?
Record a vote at appropriate time. Counselor McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rather quickly, could we not partner with four oh seven E T R to collect the fines or an agency such thereas? I'm sure our downtime would go to zero and our fines not collected would go to zero. Thank you.
Mr. Jagannathan?
Yeah, through the chairman to the counselor, the the current technology that four oh seven E T R uses is optical O C R. You know, basically, it reads the license plate, whereas our technology, like, you know, for good or bad, like, that's that's the specifications we built in with the vendor. They need to be manually read at the Joint Processing Center. So I suppose when the contract is up for renewal, the steering committee will look at like, you know, more more advanced technologies, perhaps.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Members of council, we'll call the vote on item seven point two as amended. All those in favor? Oh, it's a recorded vote. I apologize. Record a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic vote on main motion as amended starting now.
Okay, that carries. Members of council, I did call for recess at twelve thirty. We have with the members that have left, we have nineteen members of council left in this meeting. Just want to remind you that there is quorum. We're going to take a hour break for while we won't take an hour. We'll be back here at one thirty. On a recess to one thirty, I'm looking for a mover. Moved by Counselor Chapman, second of Counselor Shahid. On a recess to one thirty, all those record a vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to recess, electronic vote starting now.
That is twenty yeses and two no. That carries. We will read come back into the chambers promptly at one thirty. We are in recess. Lunch is in the back, members of council. Counselor Yamada, you'll have to return to your own seat, please, for voting. Okay, members of council, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Mr. Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Roll call. Okay, seventeen? Okay, so members of council, we have quorum just we have seventeen members in participating right now. So, yes, Counselor Leahy, it's back to you on seven point five.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair Henry. So I question just around these positions here. So if I go back to the budget, we, you know, we hired almost around three hundred staff. We have a staff retention and hiring challenge recognized on these different roles. But this the specifically around the the compensation analysts and the other different things, how do these hires, again, I'm not against it, I'm just asking the question, how is this going to help with our retention, hiring and ability to, you know, retain and attract new talent to the to the region?
Did you want to start, Elaine? Okay, go ahead, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This gives us the opportunity to quicken the process. So right now, it could take up if we were looking at a new job, it could take up to eight months to go through the the writing of a doc, the documentation that we need and to go through the hiring process. Lot of times, people move on before we can get to that point. We also go through an evaluation process, and we want to go to a one voice so that the evaluation is equitable for everybody.
No, okay, and and fair enough. And I guess if we pre approve these ahead of the budget now, it's just going to speed up that whole process.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, just trying to understand, because I know, again, hiring three hundred, hiring more, not opposed to hiring more, but it's and then my last question around that is that are were we able to fill all those positions that were allocated in the budget? Or are we halfway there or hundred percent there or zero percent there? Do we have any high level? High level's fine.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have the actual numbers. It is a process. We're working on it. We have many, many hirings throughout the year, but we also have people that have retired or moved on. And so it's not just those positions that need to be hired. So over the the process of the year, there's many, many hirings.
Okay, fair enough. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Schumer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. And just to confirm, so we're looking at just a little over eight hundred thousand dollars in annualized increases to to salary here?
Yes, that's correct, annualized.
Okay, I understand and agree with a lot of what Counselor Leahy said. I'm just I'm not sure if I'm comfortable approving this this far ahead of budget. But but thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Counselor Brenner?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate what staff has said and will certainly be supporting. I'm curious, the question that I do have is, does this apply? Are we looking at across the organization, including where we have unionized staff? Or is this only the non-unionized staff?
This is predominantly non-unionized staff.
How are we going to be are we able to? And I don't want to go into a confidential environment because of collective collective agreement, so maybe you can answer it more generically. Are we where we're looking at, and I guess it would be Union would do reclassification requests if if that's the process? Do we have an idea in terms of when we begin to look at that or if we're looking at that, what additional cost might be? And how will we look at ensuring that we have enough money of that eight hundred thousand to be able to accommodate addressing all of the needs? Because retention of our frontline workers are equally important. They do amazing work.
No question, and we certainly saw that over the last three years. As we approach collective bargaining, we do take a report to council that is in camera, but that generally talks about the order of magnitude that we are looking at with respect to improvements in salary and benefits from the union for the unionized staff. And we work within those guidelines that are approved by council and then report back when the agreement is reached. So it's just a different process, but again, we try to be equitable. And I'll give an example of amalgamating some of our long term care collective agreements because there were two different ones with two different sets of salary and benefits, which was not equitable. And during the last round of bargaining, we managed to amalgamate those.
Thank you very much, Seo. Appreciate the explanation and also the acknowledgement about the great work that our frontline people do, especially on today, as as Chair Henry alluded to at the beginning of our special meeting of council. You can never say it enough.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, I have no other speakers. Okay, on seven point five, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? That carries. Members of council, we'll move on to item eight, confidential matters. We have two matters, eight point one, eight point two. Can I get a mover? Oh, sorry, Counselor Chapman?
Yeah, I'd like to move them both, and it would be seconded by Mayor Barton, and we'd like a recorded vote at the appropriate time, please.
Okay, thank you. Are there polls? Seeing none? Can we do both as a recorded vote? Okay, we'll do them both. We'll do them both together. Is there any objection? Okay, then we'll call for the recorded vote. Members of council, we're voting on both item eight point one and eight point two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote starting now.
That carries. On my screen. Okay, I was gonna say, is your screen any different than my screen, but I hope not. So that carries. Then the the last business of the day is adjournment. Counselor Crawford, Counselor Nicholson, as the movers and seconders on adjournment, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition, seeing none? Thank you very much to staff and the members of council. Enjoy the rest of your day.